Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call the roll call?
Jim Shiler.
Here.
Your name's Uncle.
Here.
Mark Andrade. Beth Murray Evans.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
He won't be here.
I call Mr. President.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Dottle.
Yes.
Koppel.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Grados.
Yes.
Donbeck.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Before we go, I'm going to message a quick note about item three point zero five on NIA executive or ballot. Um, that's sent by NIA, NIA board. Board needs to vote on two candidates, there were only two candidates that it's going on. Um, unless somebody has a suggestion for a write-in, I just want to make sure that, that everybody knew that the board approving the consent agenda would be able to vote for both of those two candidates.
Roll call.
Koppel.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Grados.
Here.
Shiler.
Yes.
Donbeck.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item then would be Spartan awards. This time I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carrick, our activities director, um, for Spartan award. Do you have high school Spartan award because I know.
I have no idea.
Um, I talked to Mr. Flavin, just so everybody in the audience knows and the board knows I talked to Mr. Flavin. There were only two students that were going to be recognized and neither one of them could be with us this evening. Um, so there aren't any middle school students here to recognize.
I think one of them's here.
Is there one?
Jordan, right here.
Okay, I apologize for that. Mr. Flavin didn't, for whatever reason, didn't think he was going to be here, so I apologize for that.
Well, we can rectify that.
Sure, absolutely. Why don't you come forward, we'll start with the middle school. Want to do this one, Mr. Carrick, or do you want to do it?
This is, you're Jordan, right? Yeah, this is Jordan Lisa Feld. She finished fourth at the ISA straight track meet in pole vault. So, come on over here to Mr. Donbeck and get your order. Congratulations. Next, we're going to recognize Steven Chen. Steven is the first state qualifier in boys tennis in school history. So Steven had a great season, so congratulations to Steven. For girls track, uh, I know Mallory Mori's here tonight. She can come on up. She was a state qualifier in pole vault.
All the pole vaulters are saying it's because their coach made them do it that they're.
Alright, and then I know we have two of the boys track team. Is there more than two? They can come on up, Will and Donahoe and Kayden Emmer. They were, uh, they were both on the four by four team that took sixth. And Kayden also was fifth in the open eight hundred, so. And then we have members, a few members of our softball team here. We'll have them come up and introduce themselves. With Coach Carpenter. They won the sectional this year. Go ahead and introduce yourselves.
I'm Caitlin Williams.
I'm Addison Dear Shaw.
I'm Bella Jenkins.
I'm Haley Marchese.
Uh, we won the third sectional in school history and the fourteenth regional in school history. And this program's been around for fifty-two years now, I believe. So it was quite an accomplishment for the girls and we had a great run and enjoyed our run along with boys baseball at the same time. That made it double the fun, so thanks for all the support.
That brings us to Coach Kavanaugh and the baseball players. They can come on up. They had a great season, which culminated in a third place finish at the state tournament.
I brought the hardware out of there.
Nick, we'll let the players introduce themselves too.
Um, Tommy Townsend.
I'm Jimmy Evans.
One other one, be two, sure. Add to the collection?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, straight up.
I understand that the baseball team and the softball team are going to be on the view of LBK tomorrow. And take over the radio station, so.
Nine o'clock, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, that'd be something, uh, something to listen to. Uh, next item then is audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any particular issue? Move on then, um.
Hey Jim, we interrupted for just a second. We had a, a last minute entrance into, uh, to the meeting that we want to recognize. As long as he made the trip, we want to make sure that he gets recognized. Mr. Carrick, you want to do this one too?
Yep, this is Nick Zerko. He was, uh, ninth place in the triple jump at the state boys track meet, so.
That would be do audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay. Yep, you can come forward and state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Dave Emmer, fifteen thirty-one Christine Drive, Sycamore, Illinois. Uh, I would just like to give a special thanks to this board. We were here several months ago with concerns over the movement of graduation. It turned out we had many senior boys who were able to participate in that, in that state track meet. And it meant so much to us to be able to come home that Saturday evening and have graduations to look forward to on Sunday. And I just thank this board, Sherry, my wife and I, and all the other, especially the senior families are very, very thankful that, um, were able to do that for us.
You're welcome. Anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening on any particular issue? Okay, and then maybe we'll move on. Um, communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. Lots of, uh, lots of newsletters with lots of legislation in there. The bulk of which I really don't know the contents of yet. Probably won't until the governor actually starts to consider them, so. We shall see. I mean, we have right now the budget. Uh, the budget, uh, legislation that's been revealed to us. But with the rest of this up, it's sort of all rolled up in those bills and we'll see. We know there's a number of them that relate to education. Hopefully they're no really unpleasant surprises. Foyer requests, there were four at the meet. Uh, all of them have been answered. Our, uh, FOIA officer is not here. But, uh, you know, I just wonder why some of them are such blanket requests. It's pretty obvious that, you know, fit in FOIA. And, and it looks like they spread those around all over the state, so I don't know. Are some districts answering though, or do you know?
There's been a couple of FOIA requests that are, like you mentioned, just looking for gentleman's information and believe that they're going to all the authority districts in the state. Uh, I imagine some districts are pushing back, some aren't. Uh, I can tell you that we've, um, questioned a couple of those boys and responded. And as directed at, you know, consulting legal counsel if necessary.
Yep.
But Nicole's done a great job of handling those and working through those. For some of them, it's kind of this time of year where they're looking for information about how schools have operated through the course of the year. Frustrating nonetheless.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. It looks like she's done a really good job. There were some esoteric provisions there that had to be raised to, uh, to respond to some of those FOIA requests, so I, I, I appreciate her efforts. We can tell when she gets back, if we can remember that long. Suspension report? I didn't see a suspension report. Was there a suspension there? I missed that. Maybe I didn't want to see it, I don't know. Um, but that's the last one, right? I mean, we'll, we'll have the summer, the summer off at least. Committed reports, is it, uh, we haven't got a committed report, but I suppose at this point we don't have committed assignments yet, so we probably don't have to. Superintendent's report?
Uh, it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Carrick back up. We're going to start with a review of athletics and activities, um, throughout the school year, so. Carrick is the expert on all things activity related in the, in the district. All yours.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah, I did.
Alright. So we'll start off, obviously, we've already talked about baseball's accomplishments this year. With regional, winning everything and placing third in the state tournament. As a whole, across athletics this year, uh, our participation numbers were up about ten percent across the board. Uh, six through twelve, which I thought was awesome. And, uh, but not only was the baseball team successful on the field, uh, they had ten of the varsity baseball players were academic all conference as well. So, uh, during academic all conference, they had to have a three point five GPA and earn that varsity letter. So, uh, baseball had a great season. We'll move on to boys basketball. Again, our numbers were really good at the high school and the middle school. Uh, both, all those teams were very successful. Again, with the boys basketball team having seven of their twelve or thirteen, I can't count off the top of my head there, but were academic all conference as well, which again is really good. Girls basketball, you know, they won the interstate eight conference championship. They won the regional again. Uh, both middle school teams won the conference championship. Four of these girls were all conference and eleven of them were academic all conference. So again, a very, very good group. Moving on to boys bowling, they won the regional. Our middle school bowlers qualified for state as a team. And four of the seven that are in that picture were academic all conference. Going to the girls bowling, regional champions, middle school, again, were ISA state qualifiers. Three of the six in the picture were academic all conference, so that's really good. Moving on to cheer, our cheer numbers at the high school and the middle school were significantly up this year. Uh, they had a great season and we're looking forward to them continuing to improve. Move on to boys, competitive dance. Again, competitive dance, um, numbers are really good, the high school and the middle school. And these young ladies, seven of them were academic all conference this year. Boys cross country, Naifal Harvey and Ethan Sulphusburg were state qualifiers. Ranka Ristman was twenty-third in the state for the ISA. Um, and boys cross country, the number I have written for them is at no point did any of their athletes show up on our DNF list during the school year. So nobody had that one bad test that got them, so what, you know, what a great group, um, academically. They were, some of them were academic all conference. Girls cross country, our numbers for girls, a few years ago, we were down to about twelve. Uh, we've doubled that in the last three years. Sayyid Long was a state qualifier for the ISA. So we're looking forward to that, her coming forward, and thirteen of these young ladies were academic all conference. Football, uh, football numbers are as good as they've been. Uh, the middle school is probably up about thirty. Interstate eight champions, they went to the state semifinals. Uh, the eighth grade boys were the conference champions. And the football team, twen- they had twenty academic all conference athletes this year. So that's really, really good accomplishment. Uh, boys golf, again, good numbers. Uh, the golf numbers look different this year. The boys and girls have always been on the same team. This year we split the teams. Uh, so instead of having thirty-ish golfers, uh, it looks different even though if you combine them both, we're still about where we are. So we had twenty-one boys play this year and seven of them were academic all conference. So this is the first girls golf, girls only golf team we've had in school history. Uh, they had a great season. Brianna Shaboon was a state qualifier and, uh, six of our, all six of the girls were academic all conference. Uh, gymnastics, we co-op gymnastics with the Cal. They had a great season. They qualified for state. They finished fourth. Unfortunately, the state of Illinois only gives three trophies for gymnastics, so, uh, but they had a great season as well. And, um, four of the girls from Sycamore were academic all conference. Boys soccer, again, numbers improved. Uh, they were conference champions. They won the regional. And they had twelve of their athletes were academic all conference. Girls soccer this year, um, they were, they finished second in the conference and had a really good season. Uh, but again, they're very academic oriented and fifteen of the twenty-four girls were academic all conference. That was awesome. Softball, we talked to, met them earlier. Regional and sectional champions and eight of these young ladies are academic all conference. Boys swimming, we get another sport, we co-op with the Cal. Jacob Grammer is a Sycamore student. He qualified in the fifty and the hundred freestyle. Um, he was also on that relay. Uh, Max, I always miss his name, Alaxios, uh, he is also on that team, on that relay team that qualified for state. Uh, two of the Sycamore athletes were academic all conference. Same with girls swimming, we had two of the Sycamore girls were academic all conference. Uh, the girls swim team was pretty young this year, so we're looking forward to them, uh, showing some great things in the future. Boys tennis, again, another sport that we added this year, first team in school history, had a great season. Uh, I hate to add two losses during the year. Uh, ended with Steven Chen, uh, advancing deep into the state tournament. And they had ten academic all conference athletes. Then we get to girls tennis. Uh, they were sectional champions and they qualified every group at the, at the sectional for the state tournament. Both singles players and both doubles teams qualified for state, which was awesome. And they had twenty all conference athletes. So if you think about, they're only able to start eight, but we had twenty girls that it was important enough to them that they kept their grades and, and did a great job. So that was awesome. Boys track, we met a few of the boys. They had a great state tournament. Uh, Ed Wiser finished second in the long jump. And, uh, you can see all the accomplishments they had there. It was a great deal. And of the boys track, now they have eighty-six boys up for track, which probably half of them are varsity athletes. And they had twenty-seven reach academic all conference status, so that's really good. Girls track, again, we had the three state qualifiers, uh, the two young ladies, uh, placed in pole vault. Mr. Donbeck being a comment, I mean, our girls pole vaulters are really good right now, so they do a great job. Bill Pulak works with them. Uh, the coaches at the middle school do a great job as well. Uh, the girls track team had twenty-five, uh, academic all conference athletes. Volleyball, uh, they finished middle of the pack in the conference, uh, but they had ten academic all conference athletes. Brings us to wrestling. The, uh, high school team won the regional. They had, uh, three state qualifiers, all were place winners, uh, Gus Cambeare, Zach Crawford, and Lincoln Cooley. And then our middle school wrestlers had sixteen state qualifiers this year, which is unheard of by far a school record. Five of those kids were state place winners. Uh, if you go to the high school team, they had eight academic all conference wrestlers, which is really good, really good. Then we get to our music department. The music department had a, there, I mean, people don't, it's like the best kept secret in town, I think. The strings department has finished first in the solo ensemble three or four of the last five years. They're always right there. Uh, the band is always in the top ten. The vocals are always in the top ten. This year, the scores worked out so that they won the overall when they had everybody together. So we were the solo en- solo ensemble and organizational state champions for the whole state of Illinois in class A. Which, first time in school history and, you know, those people do a great job, um, all the way, starting with kindergarten all the way to, uh, allowing the high school to reap that benefit when they get in high school, so. Our closing activities at the high school, these are the activities we have, we offer. Most of the numbers here are, have improved or stayed similar. Uh, some have dipped. Uh, there's some that have low numbers. Some of that is, uh, we'll just say, there, there is participation going on, but it's not being reported. And we're just going to, we told the people, hey, we need to know who's participating so we can report that not only to you guys, but so I can report that to, to the administration downtown. But again, real good numbers in, in most of our activities. Same at the middle school, you know, uh, again, we all know the musical says zero, but we all know the musical took place, so. Uh, we just need to clean that up and get that taken care of so that, uh, we have that paper trail that people are participating, so. Moving forward, these are the start dates for the fall sports. Uh, everybody starts August seventh. It's going to be here before we know it. Then we can go on to the winter. The winter kind of staggers their starts, uh, throughout, starting in late October all the way through, uh, right before Thanksgiving. And then the spring sports usually start, track starts the end of February, or end of January actually, and then February twenty-sixth for the, uh, other four. And if anybody has any questions at this time, we'll be having answers. Yes, sir?
How long has the rugby club been out? I know they were there before.
The, they have not been around, uh, they did not come back from the pandemic. After the pandemic, uh, the coaches had moved on and, uh, we just didn't have anybody to, to keep that going.
Chelsea, I appreciate your presentation. Uh, it's cool to see the amount of participation in these sports and activities, but then also seeing how you know, these student athletes are, even the students that are in activities are, you know, excelling in their activity or sport and then also excelling in the classroom. That's cool. Uh, is there anything like on the docket or rumblings from students or student athletes where there's a sport or activity that we don't offer that you, you either see that there's an immediate need for, or hey, there could be a need later on down the road? Like there's something we don't offer that like is growing that you see or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always people that are asking for, for initial stuff, but it, it took us a, we took the process to bring girls golf and boys tennis in, and I think we got to start that process if there was something else. Whether, uh, I know boys volleyball is popular towards the suburbs, uh, but we also got to make sure we have that balance for tight align between the men's and the women's.
Sure.
So, uh, to answer your question, no, I think everybody was really excited that we added those two sports this year. Uh, I'm sure it'll be a couple of years and we'll start getting more knocks on the door, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Green.
Alright, thank you.
When was the last survey?
That's a great question. Uh, that should have been done this past spring, so it's going to get done this fall. And I will make sure that that gets to you guys, uh, probably before we go to Thanksgiving. That was, when I looked at my notes towards the end of May, I was like, uh, Chox has dropped the ball on this one, so, uh, anyway, that should have been done in the spring. Uh, we'll, we'll get that done in the fall and go from there.
Yeah, always interesting to see what crops up in that.
Yep.
Is that of students, what interest they have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Everything. Yeah, we, we examine everything.
Okay.
Do you have a lot of students interested in the history club?
Yeah, yeah, they usually have anywhere from ten to twenty-five kids that are involved in the history club, yes.
That's good.
Yep. The history club, they do, they work directly with the, uh, veterans, not, yeah, the Veterans Day, uh, celebration that we have at the high school. They, they've worked real close with Mr. Carlson and I'm sure Mr. Swanson will keep that going.
That's really good. Thank you.
Goodbye.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Uh, next item on superintendent's report is opportunity inbound, so, uh, we have with us this evening Caitlin Lancaster, um, who is the director, executive director?
No.
What's the official title?
The Cal County Marketing Manager.
Okay. Who oversees opportunity inbound and, and the work that they're doing, so, um, just going to give her some time to share what they're doing before and and then, uh, offer an opportunity for questions at the end.
No, no, I'm intended.
Yes, yes. Uh, I'm going to switch to her PowerPoint. And I can run the clip for you or you can do that?
You do it.
You know, it's like.
Is, uh, audio going? Do you think we'll have audio or?
Uh, that's a good question. Probably not, but let's give it a shot and we'll get there.
Okay, it's one of the very first things, so, um, thank you so much, Steve, for inviting me to present to you this evening. Having Mr. Carrick go before Coach Carrick to me, I mean, he's always been coached to me, but, um, having him present about the student athletes at Sycamore. I'm a proud alum and athlete. But, um, having him present about the student athletes, I'm a more, I'm a proud alum and athlete myself. So it's very cool to see, and especially those student athlete component numbers. Um, I really, really appreciated that. So thank you so much. Um, but I'm just gonna go over tonight with you what is opportunity unbound and why now? Uh, where we are, where we're going, and how you can help. So.
Just the video?
This is the video. We'll see if audio works. If not, no big deal. As I can always. Opportunity Unbound is a branding and communication strategy developed to showcase the adventure, excitement, and growth that is happening in DeKalb County, Illinois. Why Unbound? Well, to acknowledge that while DeKalb County has always had a lot to offer, we're taking it to the next level. Reinforcing why DeKalb County is the place for businesses across industries to join others like Meta, Barrara, Syngenta, and Amazon, who have recently decided to call DeKalb County home. With over one billion dollars of industrial construction in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we knew that the time was now and needed to strike while the iron was hot. Having a clear, consistent message countywide was essential to continue the momentum that was taking place. We identified three main target audiences: prospective businesses and corporations, new and current residents, and visitors. Members met weekly to develop an opportunity unbound website, social media pages, a digital marketing strategy, and to gain stakeholders. We even began a fundraising campaign to support opportunity unbound for the first three years until it would be sustainable on its own. The OU website went live on March fourth, twenty twenty-two, and opportunity unbound was officially launched with press releases and media appearances. Our initial goals for opportunity unbound were to attract and retain a strong and diverse workforce to support businesses, expand the quality of life in the county through specific attractions and entertainment venues, create a more diverse palette of opportunities for people of varying races, religions, and ethnicities, integrate our county with NIU and other educational institutions, and leverage business retention and attraction efforts. To capitalize on the initial success of opportunity unbound, we will continue working to expand businesses in our community, both existing and new, through growth in our community and attracting visitors with all the great things to do in DeKalb County. Opportunity Unbound, you'll find that right here in DeKalb County, Illinois. So that just gives you a little bit of background about what opportunity unbound is. But I wanna take a few steps back and let you really understand why DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation decided to really pursue this branding effort. So historically, economic development corporations nationwide have not really focused on the quality of life aspect of things. They're really driving in businesses and trying to expand businesses within their communities. But they're not really focusing on that talent attraction effort. And so, um, DeKalb County EDC saw the population start to decline in the county, working with DeKalb County government, and worked through their SEDS plan, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And funding showed opportunities where they needed to really start to focus. Uh, and they brainstormed some ideas and some committees that were formed through the SEDS plan were the Business Retention and Expans, Expansion Talent Pipeline, it's also known as BRE in our world. Um, and really, that committee continues to meet and really fo, focus on the needs of our local businesses. Um, the mayor's forum, local community mayors, um, got together to really determine how they were being business friendly and what the best practices were. That is still a committee that is, that is working strongly as well. Also, the Community Champions Committee. Um, that is really getting that philanthropic arm and the volunteers of specific communities together to talk about what, uh, economic development looks like in their small town, like in Malta or in Cortland. Um, we even had, we had a lot of, um, folks from like Lee and Chabana as well that were really interested in how could they revitalize their areas as well. And then the branding initiative. So the branding initiative really took hold because when somebody else is telling your story, are you really sure that that's the story that you want to be told? That's the question that kept being asked. Is this the true story of DeKalb County? And when other people are telling that story, uh, sometimes the negative kind of comes, comes out the loudest. So you wanna make sure that you're telling your true authentic, um, story about what is happening and all of the good things that are happening so that really changes the perception of what's happening in your county. And so, like I, like I had mentioned, the history of economic development, not really focusing on that quality of life piece, it really had to be explained to the Kalb County Economic Development Corporation what a branding initiative looked like. And so they pulled in three different agencies that had worked with, um, tasks like this before, and they partnered with DCC Marketing. DCC Marketing had done a similar initiative of branding for, um, Macon County in Decatur. And so they came in and really started to hone in on what was, what were we, what were we trying to do here in DeKalb County? And what our focus needed to be. And one word through those meetings and town halls and countless conversations was opportunity. DeKalb County presented itself with opportunity to grow, to expand, for people to come, come back and live in the same area in which they maybe grew up. And so opportunity unbound was born. So where are we now, other than the Sycamore Middle School, in which I went to school here? Um, DCC Marketing really was forceful in the sense of saying, okay, you need to run this campaign, a silent fundraising campaign, to be able to hire a marketing manager to have boots on the ground in the community that is authentic to them and be able to tell a really true, authentic story about a place that they love. And so I saw this as an opportunity for myself to come back to this community that I, that I love being in and part, being part of, and really just kind of ran with it. So I have been with opportunity unbound and DCEDC now for the past year, which was just my year anniversary last week. Um, and we've just really tried to hit the ground running and really drive the awareness piece of opportunity unbound. So all of this was happening behind the scenes, and then I was hired, uh, just last year. So as the video had stated, the, uh, OU website had gone live March of twenty-two. Um, so that was happening all behind the scenes, and the silent fundraising campaign was happening prior to me being hired. Uh, but I, as I mentioned, I lived in Sycamore, went to Sycamore, but I also worked throughout the county. So that was the other piece that was really helpful to me expanding my, uh, exploring my option with opportunity unbound. Um, is that I have, I've worked and been a part of organizations in Sandwich and in, uh, Kirkland and in Genoa and Kingston to be able to make sure that I was able to talk about the entirety of the county as opposed to just the Sycamore-DeKalb area. So where are we going? It's always a good question, right? Um, we are just trying to continue our momentum. So as stated, we had a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fundraising goal to start with. When Paul Borick, the executive director of DeKalb County EDC, heard that number, he had no idea if anyone was really gonna buy in. But lo and behold, our businesses in this county really understood the need to attract talent, to attract businesses, diversify the tax base, and started to pledge their, pledge their campaign and support for opportunity about. So we are about seventy percent of the way to reaching that initial fundraising goal. Fundraising began with a silent campaign. Now we're moving into a public campaign and working on raising the rest of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we've been asking for contributors to commit to a three-year campaign for us. Um, we partnered with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. They are all over the, all over the county all the time, sharing all of the fun things and exciting tourist attractions that we have. So we utilize, we partner together a lot of the time to, to share each other's story, uh, bringing in visitors, but also attracting, uh, new residents as well. We're promoting all the great things on social media, and our followers, friends, and awareness has grown month over month, which is one of the statistical things that we use to measure, um, to measure the success of this campaign. We use paid advertising and we target site selectors, current potential residents, talent, and new and current businesses. We serve as a connection point with HR teams and employees. So we came to find out at some of these town hall meetings that some HR departments maybe weren't sitting in, say, Meta in DeKalb. They were somewhere else, and they just kind of drew a pin that on where they thought maybe their employees might want to live. And it wasn't always landing in the Sycamore-DeKalb or DeKalb County area. And so we really worked with the HR teams to say, hey, wait, we have, we have great stuff too. And so we can communicate with our businesses and our HR teams to share where, where people can live. And then it's only, you know, a few minutes down, down the road if they want to live in a different or more rural community. Uh, we also present to various organizations such as yourselves, uh, just to share the spreading, good news of DeKalb County and opportunity unbound. But we also really believe that we're uniting the county. So we work very closely with the Kalb County government, and I have, have their one county pin on, uh, because we really talk about uniting everybody and really bringing everybody up. So there are smaller communities other than Sycamore, which we all know, in DeKalb County. Not all of them have such an integral school district or a park district that can really amplify their events. Uh, and so we really try to strive with opportunity unbound to share the good news of those areas as well to help with tourism and, and, um, businesses and such. We are also beginning a young professional organization called Opportunity Unbound Elevate to engage those young professionals that live here and/or work here in DeKalb County. And our first event is actually on Thursday, so we're super excited for that to come to fruition and really just to engage those young, that younger demographic. If they're engaged and involved in their community, they're gonna build roots here, they're gonna stay here. And so, and that's what we really tried to do. And as was, as the video shared, and we've labbed this statistic all over the place, that in the last three years, there's been over one point nine billion dollars in industrial investment in DeKalb County. And that equals the first thirty-three years of industrial investment dollars of DCEDC's history. So in the last three years, we have grown as much as we grew in the first thirty-three years, which is just mind-blowing. Um, so we love to share that because there's just, there's so much growth happening, but there's so much more coming. So just to share, uh, actually, this is the, this is the screenshots from opportunity unbound website. And if you haven't ever seen it, make sure you check it out, opportunityunbound.com. And as you'll notice, maybe, uh, it's a little bit different even from the video, because this is a really fluid campaign. We continue to go on feedback from others, um, every presentation that I do. I kind of change things up a bit after, after we're receiving some feedback and questions, just so I'm making sure I'm hitting on, hitting on all the highlights. There's our website, and we have all of these stakeholders already that have, that have pledged towards opportunity unbound, uh, to help make DeKalb County successful. Just really quickly, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna analyze, uh, and use my analytics and my behind, behind the scenes numbers crunching too much. But our, our website, as stated, launched on March of twenty twenty-two. And in that time, we've had over twenty-three thousand sessions, and most of those sessions and website visitors are actually new users. So what we're finding is that we are really hitting that paid, um, target audience that we're looking for, and they're coming to our site, and they're not just clicking off of our site. They're coming there and they're actually looking at one, two, or three pages. We have all sorts of, all of our organic social media, Facebook linked in, Instagram and Twitter. And we, um, are above engagement rate, benchmark averages on all of those, uh, except for Twitter, which we're working on. Um, and myself and my intern that we've had through NIU for the past school year, um, she works on those social media posts as well. So we're really trying to talk, talk to everybody in the county, uh, no matter, no matter what age demographic we're talking to. We do have some paid, um, advertising going on, which I love to call out the number. Our performance today is over one point seven million impressions on Facebook. So this isn't just happening right here in this county or in this town, in this community, it is nationwide. We have hits on our website from all across the world. So this, this campaign is getting out there and we're really excited about it. We do also optimize and utilize Google search and remarketing on, on our paid social sites as well. So really, how can you help? What am I actually here for, right? I can get to my last cheat sheet. So what you can do, the easiest thing that you could do for us would be to follow or like any of our social pages. Share, make sure that you're sharing with others, saying, hey, there's this really cool opportunity, it's called opportunity unbound. Hey, why don't you take a look at their page? They're sharing cool things, workforce development, um, opportunities, career development opportunities, and fun things happening around the county. You know, we're gonna talk about how sandwich fair tickets go on sale soon. So there's, there's a good mix and a good balance of all of the things that we're trying to highlight in DeKalb County. We have spirit wear, so we have, we have some swag on our website. So you can get your swag and you can wear that around town. You can let us know what's going on, what's coming up. Where do you think we might wanna advertise? We do some geofencing with some, you know, some like targeted fancy terms for if people are coming here to Corn Fest and then going back home to Hoffman Estates. In the next thirty days, they're gonna see an advertisement for DeKalb County and opportunity unbound. So if there's an event you think that we should put our invisible marketing arms around, let us know. Happy, happy to work with you on that. Um, even help us identify businesses, people, or community stories to feature. Um, we have video testimonials, we have written testimonials, happy to, happy to interview those people and share those videos on our socials as well. Be an ambassador. I have an ambassador group, and in fact, we get a fancy ambassador pin that says, ask me about OU. Um, and do you like to share, you know, when you're out and about? I mean, one of the first people that comes to mind to me is Tia Anderson. She wears hers from Heartland Bank all the time to be able to talk about what opportunity unbound is and what DeKalb County has to offer. Or if I can give a presentation to your company or another board that you might, may be a part of. Um, so I can share the good news, but also have, have those boards or companies consider funding for opportunity unbound. And the last way is to donate. And so that would be my ask of you this evening would be to consider, from the Sycamore School Board, to, um, donate to opportunity unbound in a contribution pledge for the next three years of twenty-five hundred dollars for each year. So a seventy-five hundred dollar contribution. And I want to put this in a little bit of perspective for you. Um, with that contribution, I have one more slide. With that contribution, we highlight you on our stakeholders page, we work with you on our social media posts, we amplify things that are going on, um, within the school district. But something that I would like to highlight is an example that I, that I, maybe some of you have heard, and you'll see you have, from Brian Gregory, he's our county administrator. And he yet shares the example that a twenty million dollar project coming into this community, any community in the county, means a turnaround of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue for a school board, or a school district, sorry. And so to put that into a little bit of perspective, we're talking about one point nine million dollars worth of growth in the last three years. But the Sycamore School Board has pledged their support for the enterprise zone. And the enterprise zone is administered by DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. And for Sycamore, in, since that inception in two thousand and sixteen for the enterprise zone, sixteen projects have either been built or expanded within the Sycamore territory. And of that, those sixteen projects, it has brought in over sixty-four million dollars of industrial investment. And so that twenty million dollar project is now, has been sixty-four million dollars for the, for the city of Sycamore. And so that translates into much-needed revenue for the Sycamore School District. And so with that, we just are really asking for your support and contribution to continue on with the mission of what we're trying to do and share the good news of DeKalb County, share what all of our communities have to offer, the fact that we have. Share what all of our communities have to offer, the fact that we have wonderful schools, fantastic student athletes, clubs, and activities. All of the great things that are happening in, in Sycamore that we're still very proud of. Uh, and I'm slightly biased because I'm a total Spartan at heart. Uh, and so I would just thank you for your time and I would appreciate the consideration for that contribution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, you alluded to the fact that money is going to the city of Sycamore that benefits the, the, the school board? How does that happen? Uh, we haven't seen dime of that money?
That's being a dime of that money?
No.
So it goes through the county and then the county contribution? So the equalized assessed value is what our industrial investment votes?
Which we have an abatement in place as part of the agreement that we entered into, so we don't really see any of that money.
Okay, understood.
And we won't for, for many years.
I guess my question will be, where is this contribution coming from? Taxpayers? Because we have issues in, within the school that, you know, we, a lot of repairs are needed within the building itself.
Hmm.
And even possibly to build a new school.
Right.
And then secondly, most of rural DeKalb County is farmland. So if we're bringing a lot of people in, is there housing, like, has that been considered? The housing for people that would move here from, let's say Hoffman Estates or wherever, across the world? Because like you said, your website covers across the world. And, uh, so that would be a concern too, but my biggest concern would be the money coming from the taxpayers of the county.
Right, right. I did not understand the, how the abatement situation was working within, within the school district. So yes, unfortunately, that would have to be a consideration of money coming from the, the taxpayers. Um, and we are in constant communication with our builders and developers, um, all across the county to talk about additional housing.
So would that degrade the farmland? I guess that's my question.
What was that?
Would that degrade the farmland?
There are, there are-
Cause most of rural DeKalb County is farmland.
Mm-hmm, yep. There's, there's very specific considerations for where those buildings, buildings or housing would potentially take place. Of course, they're not built yet, uh, but that's work that happens kind of behind the scenes with the city of Sycamore and-
And then what about what the hospitals and the schools can handle and what people are coming in?
I mean, we're not, it's not presumed that we are going to have a major population growth that we're not going to be able to expand in the time that this is happening. It takes a company like Meta or Ferrara a couple of years.
Oh, they're popping up pretty fast over there.
It, but it does take a couple of years to actually have the employees in-house. Right now, most of them are contracted workers that are coming in and out of the county on a daily basis, about twelve hundred of them.
Right, that, then what about the people that live within the county having those jobs?
That's, I mean, that's what we are, that's what we're trying and hoping for.
But if we're bringing people in from outside the county?
It's a very delicate balance. I do absolutely understand that. But that's, that's actually what I'm, what I'm trying to do is have that balance to be able to share all of the good news to our current residents. That they wanna stay here and they want to, um, have jobs here. But what we're hearing also from our businesses is that they need to also attract additional talent. So it's that bound, it's the, it's a very delicate balance that's happening.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned that the county is actually seeing a decrease in population over time. Um, how significant is that decrease?
It hasn't, it hasn't been, um, from what I understand, and this survey was taken prior to me starting, um, over, over a couple of years ago. Um, I don't think that it was significant in the sense of we have to hurry up and really attract, you know. This plan was taking five to six years into, into consideration. And so the population was declining, that they figured we needed to do something about it. But it wasn't to the point of this mass exodus that's happening that we aren't gonna be able to support our communities anymore.
Is it, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is, is it Caitlin?
Caitlin.
Sorry, Caitlin. Um, I think it was Paul Borick and it might've been somebody, it might've been a different presentation, I think, if Robert Rito was talking about either Opportunity Unbound or D C E D C and all these growth projects going on. Um, and, and to reiterate on, on my co-board member's point, uh, I do have questions about what the sustainability of that sort of growth is gonna be. If we don't address the housing situation. Cause I know just from other friends trying to move to the area, when I, there is zero inventory right now. And I think during that presentation, they were saying that there may be, was it five hundred to a thousand jobs a year? It, you know, kind of forecasted we're gonna be produced by all this development down at least along that, that Peace Road, you know, eighty-eight corridor.
Yes, that corridor.
And if half of those people stay in the county and then half of those people come, say, to Sycamore, then we're talking, you know, two hundred and fifty people potentially per year.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got, I don't know, half dozen homes maybe, you know, available.
Right, yeah.
How is that balance gonna be achieved? Has there been any discussion amongst your group about, about the builder's appetites in this environment for meeting that need ahead of time or?
Yes, and you know, and this exact conversation was just happening last week at the Genoa E D C meeting that I was a part of. And there is a specific builder that's in, that's in Genoa and he was saying, you know, it is, it is a tricky market right now. Um, building a home takes way, is way more dollars than it, than it used to be. And so there are some, in, within the Sycamore area, there are some developments that are already kind of pre-planned. Uh, that just have not come to fruition yet. So we have to find the right builder that's willing to take, you know, that risk.
A lot of financial risk up front.
Mm-hmm, for sure. But it definitely is a conversation that we have on almost a daily basis.
And I guess my next question would be, and maybe this is for, for Steve, but are you involved or somebody from Opportunity Unbound involved in any committees at the school districts? From, um, maybe a worker's education needs standpoint, that's maybe, you know, these businesses that you're trying to recruit and understanding what skills the, the employees need to have that they're trying to, to recruit? And then working with the school districts, say, or slash, you know, uh, Kishawaki College, say, how are we gonna put programs in place such that we're producing the employees that those businesses want to, to hire? Has there been any, any?
Yes, our workforce development piece is, is a, is a much needed piece that is, used to be in existence. And I happen to know that because the workforce, DeKalb Omo Workforce Consortium was actually my father, Gene Fogle. And he really loved that, that piece of things, really working with the high school students. Um, I know that K E C does a great job out there and we are, we are partners with them for sure about this. Um, and I'm lucky to say that Lyska Shercoin out at Kishawaki College is also very much a driving force with the workforce development piece of things as well. Um, and she's actually on our board and so we talk figuratively about the need for that. Um, at this moment, I'm only one. So I would love to be more involved in that workforce development piece. Um, right now, it's been an awareness piece for Opportunity Unbound, but that is definitely something that we hope to bring back into the schools and integrate more and further with K E C as well.
I, I would add to that, not just K E C who's a good partner we work with, uh, Kishawaki College, but, uh, Timmer Commerce, we've done as well. In fact, um, there's been some conversation about bringing businesses to the high school next year. And businesses being able to help us with the soft skills, excuse me, um, and also pitching their business and their needs a little bit. Um, the employment fair that, uh, the high school did in, in the spring was a, a piece of that. So I would say that conversation is ongoing, district primary with the high school, um, with a couple of different groups. But I think we've got some staff at the high school that are, you know, they recognize not only that the labor force need from the community, but that we've got students walking the halls that are, that can be productive and trying to be the type of employer that can maybe, you know, wind up the skill set. So I would say there's a couple of different ways that we're doing that, um, not directly with Opportunity Unbound, but essentially in the community area.
So I guess my big statement is just an encouragement that as you're looking at those next generation businesses, I think that K E C piece is a good piece to say what our current businesses need. But as you're recruiting maybe an industry that we don't currently, you know, have, have, have representation for in the county, maybe they have a unique set of skills. The only way we might find out about that would be through an organization like yours or if we can find a way to get that feedback, we've kind of created just down the road.
Mm-hmm. And I do know that there is an ongoing partnership right now with Chris Mayer and there's a, there's a wilding component that's happening. Um, and, and out at the V C M Industrial Park. And so I know that there are those, you know, kind of one-off conversations, but it needs, it definitely needs to be a larger picture. But yes, I forgot about the employment with, the employment fair with, um, with the chamber. And we work very closely with all of our chambers as reciprocal members and, um, really try and spread their, their good news as well.
Yes, my concern is just an overall sort of lack of the commercial growth that's occurred. I'm coming to our district, a majority of it's, you know, along the eighty-eight corridor. So I'm not really sure how, you know, maybe Steve Branch is better with the, or it's been reforming, how this really benefits, you know, the D C E D C. It's benefiting our district since, on its growth. Yeah, any district, there's other places in the county.
Yeah, I think that, uh, our real concern, we talked about that a little bit when we talked about-
Well, there's an intergovernmental agreement that, that, that provides for the sharing of growth along that corridor.
Okay.
So, um, so, and we signed on to that, so, we're a part of that, so we get, we get some percentage of, of the growth, even though it's not in our, in our charitable service.
So we'll get some revenue from Meta or Ferrara, where is it?
Eventually, uh, when, when all the abavements go away.
When it's been assessed.
Yeah, but, uh, I've got a couple of follow-ups. One, uh, is on the, sort of on the same track that we were talking about. And that, that is, I, I really haven't heard you talk much about northern, uh, and maybe northerners are all in this. And I know that northern's having, um, that speed, that speed interview, um, I don't know if you're familiar with, 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 with. So I would, I mean, I would think you'd wanna be there for that and set up a table or booth or whatever they'll let you have. And, uh, advertise that, you know, there's good positions here and, and that it's worthwhile staying here rather than, you know, leaving the community.
Hmm, Lisa Furman is on our board until she is part of this conversation directly, uh, and is a, is a vast supporter of Opportunity Unbound. And NIU, uh, as well as the Kalb County government have both pledged their support for Opportunity Unbound as well in the next, this few years.
And well, that would be a good event to be at, I think. Um, can get something to say on that. Uh, but the other question I have is, uh, given the fact that the economy is slowing down, we see some detrimental, some very detrimental effects on Meta. Um, uh, Amazon is, is feeling some pain, um, you know, a lot of these companies are, are hurting, um, in the current economic condition. Do you see their schedules kind of, um, slowing down to, to kind of accommodate the, the economy?
We, we have not been pretty to that information at all, that they are, that they're putting, putting that-
So they're right on schedule with what their projects are supposed to be?
Yes, yep. Well, continuing phase of phase two and Supernova has also broken ground as well, um, with current pandemic being escalating right at the moment.
Yeah, cause it, it would be, it would be, uh, just heartbreaking that, and so much, so much hope on, you know, these ventures and see them topple off the cliff, so.
Yes, no, and Supernova previously, Wildcat, they go by all of these code names and sign NDAs for a long time. I mean, we've been talking about Wildcat for the past year, but, um, that, uh, changed names into Supernova. Um, they have finally broken ground and hopefully we'll know what Supernova actually is. And hopefully in the next thirty day, in the next thirty days, uh, they made an agreement with the city of DeKalb. So hopefully I'll be able to blast that press release all over the place fairly soon, uh, with an actual name. But yes, that has finally come to fruition and yes, it does seem as though some of those projects are dragging their feet slightly. Um, but with that one in particular, it was mostly about the merging of two entities and needing to respect the employees of, of both organizations. So there was some legal issues that had to cross over for that one specifically.
I just wanna understand, this might not pertain to you per se, but where that revenue or how we're capturing that revenue, when it does come in from these, um, developments along the eighty-eight corridor? Um, cause I just looked right now, the, um, the property tax bill for Project Ventus, which is the Facebook, um, development. It's, it's going, it's, right now reported as all going to Kalb and we're not on the, on the pie chart breakdown there. Do you have any idea, like, is it all piled up and then distributed or do we not get it? Or is it some other tax besides property that we're gonna gain from this program?
We're, we're abated right now.
Okay.
Do we know how long we're abated for? I, I have to, I don't remember.
I think the first year we weren't, I'm gonna point to the second.
Five or ten year abatement?
Yeah, no, it's-
Typically did all five, I wanna say.
They changed the funding formula, so we, we don't do that in the first year.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I wanna say I think you're right, it's got, it's at least five years, it might be longer.
But I think it is that we're managed, um, so, you know, other than the inter, intergovernmental agreement, the property taxes, because of where it's located, where it's running, we're able to, to Kalb.
Okay.
That's correct, but, um, I mean, part of the agreement, we can get a percentage that after the abatement has expired, which is, so it was out.
The, the industrial equalized assessed value is, is also county-wide. And so in bringing an indust- industry into the county also helps that county, um, county-wide tax base. That they were able to hold the line and actually decrease the, the, um, county tax bases.
But of course, we don't get any, any money from the county, we don't get any money from the city of DeKalb, Sycamore.
Yeah.
We're on our own.
Cause I'm trying to see if we could somehow get into this, but if we, it's not in our territory, it's not, not that we can.
Yeah, we're in it, it's just that, it's just that we, we, we have to wait until time is prior to, you know, on to that.
And you, you did mention that you're working with developers, uh, within the community and there are projects in the works. Are these projects mostly single homes or are they apartments, are they fifty-five plus communities? Do you have any idea of what we're looking at?
So obviously the newest one is opening as a bike ranger fifty-five plus community that has been developed, uh, by Brian Ranger. Uh, but there are other single family development subdivisions that are, that are ready to go, we're just looking for builders to make that investment.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of what you see as farmland is, is owned for, for, um, residential purposes. It's just that nobody wants to build, no builder that wants to come and develop.
Are there still taxes owed on some of those properties with issues like that to come up?
Um, I don't think so. I think that, you know, once they turn it over to farmland, it's, it's a, a, a longing, it's probably somebody paid off the taxes and it's farming yet until they can either sell it to a developer who wants to build houses here. Or, or they start to put in houses themselves.
Well, the developer price, the E A B is, is, uh, maybe pretty low, so that plan won't necessarily, it's not under pressure.
Yeah. If you farm it, yeah, the assessment is very low.
I just know that one of the properties that was built in Kalb has, so had, was underwater. A lot of the developers from two thousand and eight, when all that happened, were underwater, a lot of the developers left, some of them left the state. But the things that happened, where people had to come in, take them over, negotiate the property taxes and then they get built.
Yes, right.
That's what it's kind of, yeah, how many of the property developer projects do we have that are kind of held up by tax?
I don't know, that's a good, I mean.
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that.
County, I mean, that's each municipality, you kind of, you know, it's a question.
If you can make up the city, you know, start there at least and try to get a sense of what that number looks like, like they just love to chase that down.
You know, we're usually the bigger chunk of that.
When Silverthorpe came and bought a lot of those vacant lots that were previously, I guess, closed down around the trees. And they're starting to build back up there in the North Port crossing area.
Yeah.
I can't speak to that.
Yeah, there's property along Pine Road, there's property along, um, uh, along, uh, twenty-three, uh, is where Brian Ranger is running. Uh, I'd have to do this, so. So there's, you know, there's property out on Suttonack Road that, that borders on, um, Portland, so. Yeah, I get, the, the city problem helps, but I don't know if that's-
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, I'm glad to.
Of course.
Uh, last but not the superintendents report, um, I thought it was under future focus, but, um, about a year ago, in April, we did some work at a board admin retreat, um, to set some, some-
Um, just set some, some goals for the district, so I just wanted to take some time tonight to review the progress of those goals and, and see where we're at, oh, take that back.
Oh, it's, very good.
We're not doing that yet, we're doing policy revision, so.
We're gonna do something much more interesting.
Much more interesting, sorry about that, I got out, I got out of order. Um, so I'll set the stage, and then Jim, Jim and I have anything.
Okay.
Jim and I met recently, uh, to go over policy revisions that came in two ways, I'll make sure I get this right. Um, policy update, um, one eleven, not for a couple of months, uh, policy revision one twelve, these come from the School Board Association, uh, their general counsel and some of their staff put these updates together. These were pretty straightforward, a lot of options in the school district. Um, typically, they're a result of changes in legislation, um, or they are policies that just haven't been reviewed in at least five years. So we got two ways of those policies, um, after policy update one eleven came out, policy one eleven update had, um, policies that had, um, language referring to contract, or collective bargaining agreements in the policy. Because we had two collective bargaining agreements, one with S C A, one with S E S A. Um, we updated that language, there were really been three packets that Jim and I looked at, um, after that. Not seeing a whole lot of options, other than, um, policy two thirty that has to do with the, the library media program, uh, recommending that, that the policy will stay the same without the, uh, optional language, um, presenting those to the board on, on first reading, and we were bringing this back to the board in July for second reading, and, and then, uh, I wrote that, so, um, Jim and me, you have?
Well, I mean, and it was not, not a very exciting day, it's, because it was all, it was basically all updating, um, new statutory titles and, uh, section numbers within, uh, within the new statutes. And, you know, terminology is always changing, so that's what this was mostly, terminology. It was very, it's boring, real boring when, when that happens, 'cause you don't have any choices, you don't have anything you can discuss and debate and, um, kind of roll over. The, uh, uh, keeping the, the policy that we have for library media the same, um, you know, just allows, um, for challenges to be made, but with, within the specific provisions of the policy. So, um, I don't know how that's gonna play when the governor's legislation about banning book banings, um, is probably gonna cancel this out eventually, because there just won't be, it won't be it. It won't be allowed, so, um, for the time being, I think, the recommendations, we just keep it the same and see what happens, um, with the new legislation that's coming out. Um, but, but that was really, you know, out of a packet that took hours and hours to read. That was the only choice, I was being there, and it was boring, I wouldn't tell you. Um, but, you know, sometimes, sometimes boring is good, uh, sometimes those changes are not very wel- welcome, so, um, I guess we can't complain too much, but, uh, yeah, for, for those people who put down that they wanna be on the policy committee. Boy, are, are they in for a second pass. So, um, typically what we do is we, um, have this as our first reading, and then we would, uh, have a second reading, our next board reading. Um, unless there's some objection, uh, or somebody raises a point, um, we, uh, we go forward and approve the second reading and, um, have a policy review, so. If that's okay, all right, and, you know, throw it back to the superintendent, yeah.
Now.
Now you can really be future focused.
That was gonna be future focus.
Okay.
So, uh, in April again, last year, uh, board and the administrative team did some work on goals, um, just wanna review the progress towards those goals tonight. So a bullet point of them, uh, in black is the, black bullet point is the goal, and then the lighter colored bullet point is, um, just kind of a summary. So, uh, the first one, and these were, the goals were broken up into three categories, education, operations, and communication. Also resulted in the conversation that we had last April. So, the first goal under education was that the district will offer Bible consistent in rigorous curriculum that is accessible to all students, so not just the curriculum itself, um, rigorous Bible, but that is available to all students. So, uh, of course, we've got a curriculum, it's not that we don't have a curriculum, um, curriculum reviews occur, um, on a schedule. Um, this year was both math and English language arts. The math review, um, was, was pretty much complete, uh, with the help of the, the math instructional coach, as well as some of the staff. Um, so part of what we'll do next year is work with the staff to make them aware of what the changes are, support them with, um, anything that they may, may need to implement that. The English language arts review, uh, is still ongoing, we didn't quite wrap that up this year, so we'll continue that next year. Um, those two in specific were things that I wanted to mention, but sci- science, social studies, those are also content areas we, we do curriculum on, on a regular basis. Uh, in terms of available to all students, that's something that's ongoing as well, making sure that all students have access to, to the curriculum. Of course, there have to be some requirements, uh, some may use the high school as an example, um, you don't wanna allow students to take algebra two if they haven't passed algebra one. So there need to be some requirements in place, but taking a look at the requirements and making sure that we're not hindering students from accessing the curriculum, that's the thing, so, um, that's ongoing. Uh, the second goal was developing a plan to measure student growth using multiple measures, and, and really, I would go back to Mr. Rice's presentation at the board admin retreat, uh, earlier in, in the month. Uh, he talked quite a bit about assessment and how we monitor student growth, uh, he mentioned things like, uh, the I A R, um, S A T, D L M. He also talked a bit about MAP, which is one of the local assessments, assessments that we use, it's nationally known. Um, so we'll continue to monitor that, uh, I think we talked about some of the challenges last time, too, that, for, for instance, MAP allows us to track student progress at the elementary and middle school level, really isn't useful at the, the high school level, so, making sure that we're, we're looking for, um, and implementing the right measures at the high school is something we look for. The one area, um, that we did make as much progress was developing a, a framework to kind of measure the success or the failure, uh, of initiatives. So, um, trying to come up with some sort of measurement tool or rubric to figure out which initiatives are, are working and which aren't, a little complex. Um, each initiative is a little bit different, um, some may be grouped together, but it's hard to put them all under one umbrella. So, obviously, we have ongoing conversations about those things, um, but coming up with a, a measurement tool that we can use kind of generally across the board is still something we're working on, so, of the goals, I would say that's the one that we're really still focusing on for next year. Uh, in terms of operations, a little bit more straightforward, so, um, the first goal is maintaining a balanced budget. So we were able to do that, that was a, that was an easy one, yes or no, you maintained a balanced budget, we didn't, we were able to do that this year.
That's great.
That's based on feedback from, um, from Mr. Sucker and, and where we're at. We're just ending the fiscal year, uh, this week, as a matter of fact, um, so, then the auditors will come in the summer and the fall to work with us to look over our books and, and see exactly where we're at, there's always some adjustments that need to be made after the auditors are, have, have taken a chance to, to look through the books. Uh, but based on what we know right now, we, we believe that we've got a balanced budget for this year. Uh, the district will pursue alternative funding for innovative programs, so we're constantly on the look for grants, uh, and things like that. The most recent one, I, I just wanted to bring the board's attention, was the preschool for all grant. Um, Neavell, who I don't think is, is with us, uh, here tonight, um, really championed the preschool for all grant, I worked with, um, Riley, who retires at the end of this week, um, but also Mr. Ryanik, myself, Mr. Sucker, um, to put together preschool for all grant that will, that will allow us to potentially expand preschool for all, uh, preschool for our students, early childhood, but potentially also receive funding that will offset some of our existing costs. So preschool for all has some, some specific requirements if our grant is approved. Um, we already have some classes that meet those requirements, um, the state, if the grant is approved, would give us a little bit of a grace period to plan to move other classrooms, um, to, to make sure that we're meeting all of those requirements. But, um, the overall ask for that grant was a little over nine hundred thousand dollars, so, if that's approved and there are signs that are favorable for Sycamore, one of which is that Sycamore is located in what the state calls a, a preschool desert. So there's not, the state doesn't see as many opportunities to provide early childhood support for students, um, based on the population in our area. That works in our favor for that grant to be approved, but it was just recently submitted, and the deadline was extended a little bit to let other school districts consider, uh, applying for that grant, so, that's one example. Our staff is always looking for, for grants to, to revenue, so, um, Sycamore Education Foundation is one. Uh, and then, um, here at the middle school, they received a, a Meta Community Grant, so, um, one of those, uh, businesses that, we can talk about, we talked about a little bit, offers grants, community grants. That's part of their way to become part of the community and support, um, not just schools, but other entities within the community. So we look for those as well, and, and, uh, we recently received a Meta Community Grant. I don't have a dollar amount in terms of additional grant dollars that, that we received, especially, so the preschool all, preschool for all, not being approved quite yet, but just wanted to highlight some of those.
I just have one quick question, uh, for the grants, would something that most departments qualify into, if some funding from a grant like that?
Uh, potentially, so.
I'm a little biased.
What's that?
I'm a little biased, I have a son, it's.
Okay. Uh, so Little Spartans is part of our, our, our existing preschool program, it's, sometimes it's referred, referred to as preschool, sometimes it's early childhood. Um, but we do have at least one, potentially two classrooms that already meet those requirements. But again, the grace period would allow us to kind of move, uh, some of our other classrooms and make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements. Um, could potentially allow us to expand, um, but Little Spartans is housed at Southbury, where, um, space is a little bit more threatening now after the, the, the boundary study. Um, however, we've talked about early childhood for the last couple of years, and, and really wanting to try to address the need within our community. Um, we knew that we were in a preschool desert before the state told us we were in a preschool desert, and it's not just in Sycamore, it's, it's in the area, um.
Could, could you, I just, I'm not aware of preschool deserts, so I was just wondering, is a significant part of the state, I would think, in a preschool desert, except maybe the North Shore and some of the eastern suburbs?
Uh, I can tell you off the top of my head how many areas or counties in the state are, and what they refer to as a preschool desert. Um, that's a really good question, I think some areas are, are more, have more opportunity to provide those, those needs for students, um.
And I would think there's a, a large part of the state that probably is in what they describe as a preschool desert.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I just don't know the number off the top of my head.
It'd be interesting to see that, if you see a diagram or something, what they have.
You know, there's a map, so, when the grant became available, and there was this push for the early childhood grant, um, the state did publish a map where the preschool desert's where. So what I'll do is I'll send that to the board, a, a link to that, so you can see the state, what it looks like.
Do they give a reason why, like, is it because more mothers keep their children at home and don't fit them in preschool, or can't afford it, or?
So there are instances where, uh, families being able to afford preschool is an issue. Um, but I think the larger driver of what qualifies in areas of preschool desert really is the preschool opportunities based on the, the person, the, the population. So, uh, are there enough preschool opportunities, um, whether it's a school district, nonprofit, maybe a little private? Um, are there enough locations for early childhood, or preschool, based on the numbers due to, or in that age range in the area? I think that's the main driver for that, but one of the, one of the issues that, that we've seen, at least here in Sycamore, and again, we've talked about this before, is that we know that there are families who would take advantage of early childhood, um, that really can afford it. So that's one of the reasons that, that we've, is really try to keep that, that tuition down for, um, community participants in, in Little Spartans. Is so that we don't, um, it's a way to raise revenue, but it can also drive in this way, I mean, or just, just a little increase in that number can, can make that more difficult. So we know that that's an issue for some of the families in our community.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so any other, you have some of the other goals under operations, the district will share and communicate the district facilities plan, which includes those things listed underneath there, um, so we have a facility plan, um, it's not, I would not say it's super user-friendly. Uh, you guys have, some of you have seen that, that facility odd, that facility plan, um, so we're making that available on our website so that anybody in the community can take a look at that. Uh, it's not the easiest thing to read, but it does guide us in terms of what our priorities are, priorities are in, in where we're spending the sort of dollars, so we make that available on the website.
You know, are you referring to that, uh, like, really long Excel sheet?
Not necessarily just the Excel sheet, it's, it's a, it's a report, um, that our architects put together a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Large enough that it came in two different P D F files, um, we wanna make that available, but it's kinda like the state budget form, it's not the easiest thing to handle to read.
Yeah.
So, um, we do wanna make that available, again, it's what drives our prioritizing, the work that happens in the district and, and what we know needs to happen in the future. Yeah, making that available on, on the website is something that we're gonna try to.
In my opinion, if the board does decide to go to some outside financing options such as a referendum, having a more user-friendly, um, version of that, so they can really see what we need, instead of just this PDF that they, is hard to navigate, I think might help in our favor, if it's something we're looking to.
I, I totally agree, and as that conversation happens specifically with the high school, uh, I think we need to make sure that it's in terms that, that everybody can understand, you know, what, what do the, uh, what's that work entail, um, so not even just a spreadsheet.
More specific goals.
Not just a spreadsheet that takes that out of that report, um, but enough description that members of the public can understand that without, you know, a long description that just takes forever to work to done this, so I, I think there's a balance there. Uh, but as the conversation progresses with the high school, I think that's gonna be really important, and, and it's gonna mean the balance, not only the work that's gotta be done, but as you, as you mentioned, are we, how are we planning to pay for that, which is a, it's a big issue.
Yeah, I think you'd have to provide, provide both, uh, I think you'd have to have the detailed plan available, as we, as we do, so.
Yeah, I'd.
Um, just because you don't wanna, you know, if they choose to hide anything, or, or, you know, trying to mislead somebody.
I, I totally agree, and when we did the boundary study, I worked with, uh, with Lauren and Holton Communications, put a separate page together that listed all of those, all of those, and the, the videos from, from meetings, where there was conversation, uh, about the, kind of the boundary study, um, survey results, you know, whatever we had, I agree, we need to put it all out there.
Yeah, we should reveal it all.
Whether, whether it's difficult to, to read through or not, I, I think, we would make.
Give people the option.
We're gonna make sure that it's out there so that, not that we're not, you know, hiding anything, but it's out there for anybody who wants to do, to do the research.
Yeah, give people the option.
Yeah. Uh, and in communications, uh, there were two goals, the developing a communication plan, as well as showcasing successes in the district. So first, in terms of the communication plan, Lauren Holt's our communications director has put together a communication plan, she did that, uh, this year. Kind of in draft form at first, and then kind of tweaking that a little bit. Her goal was to take a look at that again over the summer, um, maybe into the fall, but then post a revised plan, not with significant provisions, but, but tweak to that communication plan, that'll get posted on the district website, um, that's available for the community to see, but also for our staff to see. And, and some of that is guides, you know, just kind of helpful tips, tips on communication, um, but also how did the district intend to communicate with, um, with our stakeholders. So the second one, showcases. So, I think we all knew that there was a lot of opportunity for community members to see what's going on in our school. And part of that goal was, um, showcases that are open to the public. So I just started to list, um, some of the events that are open to the public that showcase our, our student success. Things like musicals, concerts, Science Olympiad, uh, Back to School Bash, um, distinguished alumni ceremony, that's where we recognize alumni who not only did things here in the district during their time as a student, but have gone on to do other things. They're still students and, and, uh, you know, moved through, uh, Sycamore schools and, and have been successful, so, this is just, I would say, kind of a snapshot. Um, that list could go on and on and on, but I felt good about it, that, that reinforced that there are plenty of opportunities for our community to see. Um, that list could go on and on and on, but I felt good about it, that it reinforced that there are plenty of opportunities for our community to see the great things that our, that our students are doing. So I just listed some there, um, that list could probably go on for a couple of slides if if we wanted to. A two-way update on on district goals from last spring, any questions for me?
I don't think, the only one I have, I think what I, maybe the next goals need to be just flushed out a little bit more, is that when I think of those showcase type events, I am thinking more of the state of the district, state of the community, sort of. Um, you know, not not so much performances and sporting events and award ceremonies, but more general information covering all grade levels. It would be that whose audience is not, you know, maybe primarily parents or enthusiasts of that sport, but just the general public, there's things going on across the district. So I think we did address that need in in multiple ways, but I think when I think about that goal, that's it was my, what my intention would have been to make of that, most types of plans. And I know we've talked about, um, more like town hall format type events, where they're considered bi-directional conversations as well.
Yeah, so I I totally agree, one of the things that we could add to this next year are the town hall meetings, that we're going to plan to do one in the fall, one in the spring. And, uh, not only is it sharing information, but, um, for that that two-way dialogue, something that I don't think the district has ever done before, or that the district has done that before, it's probably been a while, so, um, we'll see how that goes, again, when it goes in the following semester.
I just had a quick question about, I was thinking about our development mentally disabled students that were being moved out of Opportunity House to a new building, I was wondering where we were at with that.
Sure, so good question, uh, I think we've got a location that is gonna fit the bill for that, um, but it's taken us a while.
Great.
And there are a couple of entities, one of which is the regional office, has got to sign off on the permit for us to, um, to use that space. It's located within city limits, we're working with the city to make sure that they're okay with it, um, the location that we've got in mind is gonna take a little bit of work. And one of the challenges, it's not a, it's not a a property that we're interested in purchasing, we're gonna lease that property, at least that that's our intent. But before we enter into a leasing agreement, which is where we need to approve, um, we know that there's some work that needs to be done, so. Which comes first, the the lease and then the work, because we want to get into leasing without the ROEs kind of blessing that the work that we plan to do with it is gonna work out, so that's kind of where we're at right now, is working that out. The issue is that we're not gonna have that done before August, so, um, we're gonna work with the high school, that's that's the, that's the best location right now, um, to look at some of the spaces in the high school to use temporarily, um, until that space is available. So I've told, um, Ronnie Graves, who's the director of high school, and and then Riley, of course, who retires here shortly, nobody, um, believes that the high school is is the best location long term for life school. It's not that the high school is not a good location, but these are students who have, um, moved beyond high school, and we want to get them ready for life outside of and after high school. So bringing them back, I wouldn't say is detrimental, just isn't ideal, um, just kind of a stopgap until, yeah, the location we're looking at is set in place. Our hope then, if it's not ready in August, which you know, we, which we know it's not going to be, is to try to get them ready as soon as possible. When I've been part of of projects like that moving in semester, can be really challenging and disruptive, uh, and for some of the students in that program, that might be difficult. So our goal is to have that that property, you know, a lease agreed to, signed, the work done, so like the semester break, where there's kind of a natural break, we can make the move out.
Yeah, that sounds really good, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Got a question about the town halls, so that's, is that more of a new thing that we've been doing?
Say that again.
Town hall meetings?
Planning to do, yeah.
Oh, have we done them, have we done them yet?
Have we done them in years?
No, uh, it's been a longer time since we've done them.
And would those be before the board, or would they be outside of the board?
Because if we had, it would depend whether they're held as an official meeting, so that the open meetings activity, or the two board members where there would have to be, which is not a problem.
Right, it do, yeah, but. Yeah, but, so it's got to be, it's got to be an official meeting, it's got to be in.
Could be a committee or something, be able to have one, one of them do that?
I think it was paid for.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, I think we lose kind of, uh, all reasoning behind the one thing. Town hall, if we didn't have everybody.
We don't have to have a quorum for a town hall, we, like, if you had, you would need at least four.
Yeah, because it would be an official meeting, so you would have to have a quorum, yes.
Well, I've been part of those in the past, it's, until it's been treated as a special board meeting, so then all of the board members present, uh, if somebody couldn't be there, and Michael can be there, it's.
It may be the only thing on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, I think that two-way dialogue is really beneficial, um, but sometimes you go into those not really knowing what's coming at you, so, um. That's a time when, you know, I would just remind, we're part of why you hired me, to be the spokesperson for the district, but, um, as the board president, you know, generally speaks for for the board. Doesn't mean that there can't be more conversation like that, but, um, especially when it's not been done for a while, or or not been done ever. You know, I I think just kind of working through those, just up to the first couple of times, and it's in long run, and you know, you can always change the format after that, but my experience is that they've always been treated as special meetings, and that way all of the board members, you know.
I just had one quick question about your, sorry, about your, um, future focus, um, specifically the education portion, so developing the framework of systems and procedures to measure the success and failure of programs. Is that, um, is that like, we improve English scores five percent over the next, is it like a specific metric like that, or what, what does that mean?
So this is the conversation that happened, really was about, you know, when a new idea, when somebody within the district comes up with a new idea, um, you know, a new program in a math classroom, or or, um, like science, or or a location. Spartan TV would be a really good example, when somebody comes up with an idea, like Spartan TV, trying to come up with some sort of measure, um, to see if that idea is coming to fruition. Or if we're allocating resources to something that really was a good idea, but for whatever reason just isn't getting off the ground. Um, school district budget is finite, so when something new is proposed, we're using existing resources to to support that, which is something that we want to do. Um, but are, how are we able to tell whether or not that program or that initiative really is is successful? In the case of Spartan TV, uh, I I think that's really obvious, but there are probably some some measurements that we could use for that one in specific. How many views are there on Spartan TV event, or if events are broadcast by Spartan TV, what's the enrollment like in the class, and has that gone up or has it gone down? Other initiatives aren't quite as easy to come up with a clear-cut measurement for, that's part of the challenge that that, uh, that we're facing, but maybe that's something that is unique as an initiative comes up. Part of whether or not we approve or not, it's coming up with some sort of measurement that is unique to that program.
Okay, so it's extracurricular activities you're referring to, in case.
Isn't that, isn't that your curriculum?
I think it could be, I'm spitballing, maybe you were, let's go back a couple decades, you're replacing tan bark on the playgrounds with a different material and it costs you more. Maybe your metric for that is we're gonna seek fewer, uh, nurse visits given, so you're gonna measure that over five years, and yes, we spent twice as much, but entries are down to that.
Yeah.
You know, make this stuff up, but yeah, I I would think that framework needs to look at it, figure out which initiatives are worth doing that for, because some things you just have to do as a district, and that doesn't make sense through this time.
I was, I, I.
Yeah.
Figure it out, but then for each initiative, what what are we looking to improve, what's the cost associated with that, and what's the interval at which it's gonna be measured for interventionist? It might be we're looking at at test scores, if it's, um, yeah, building repairs, it might be longevity of that repair versus the traditional method you're, yes.
Because the the budget is finite, you know, we need to be careful about how we're spending those dollars, and the reality is that sometimes a really good idea that bore fruit for ten years, times change. You know, technology advances, so even something that was really successful for, successful for a period of time, just kind of falls out of favor, so. Uh, you know, I think it's, part of it's just a natural process, you know, nothing lasts forever, and just coming up with a way to figure out when something has run its course, so we can reallocate resources in a different direction, but, um. Yes, that's something that we're getting, we're getting a lot of.
Okay, well, thanks for clarifying, because I was going down the wrong track about that, and so, all right.
Yeah, no, um, it's a good question.
I'd like to, I'd like to piggyback on that, because I think, um, whether they, this could be opening a can of worms, because we already have the ballot box, we already have, um, public comments. Uh, but is there a a way to sort of also request or inquire of students, teachers, stakeholders, uh, anything about something like a new program, math program? Uh, just to how the measure is successful, um, obviously we have the numbers, obviously we have the statistics, but sometimes getting that input of the people that are actually implementing it, the people that are learning from it, or your parents and other stakeholders, uh, could be beneficial.
Yeah.
Then it could be a town hall topic.
And I, and I think that can happen in conjunction with some of the data or the anecdotal data that we get internally, so, um, we use your example as, you know, like reading program. Um, when we start a program like that, we seek that feedback from teachers, you know, is it is it easy to implement, do you have the resources that we need, are our students excited about it, are they engaged? Are we seeing changes in in grade scores, are we seeing fluency increase, or if the case may be, so we're getting that feedback internally from staff. But then what are parents saying at home, you know, are they, when they read with their children, are they seeing, you know, improvements in in students' reading abilities? So I think sometimes it's multiple measures, and taking advantage of the resources that we have, whether it's a survey, town hall meeting, or soliciting that feedback from our staff, I think. Uh, again, each program is a little bit unique, um, so maybe coming up with some measurement when we decide to move forward with the program, so we've got some clear-cut measures. That may change over time as the program gets off the ground, but, um, may serve us really well in trying to decide whether our program is working or not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, we did, I remember having a town hall about a change in the math, uh, curriculum, and, uh, I, I, the majority of parents that came to the town hall. Uh, they divided up pretty much equally, and some of them liked it because they could follow it, and some of them didn't like it because they couldn't follow it. So, I mean, they couldn't help their kids, they felt because it was a different way than what they do. And, uh, and so, you know, in the long run, we wound up with a lot of arguing and and, uh, you know, negative comments, um, kind of like versus positive comments. And, uh, it's really the performance of the kids that ultimately, you know, resolved that issue, so. So it's kind, I I I think you kind of have to, um, think it through and pick, kind of pick the battles that way a little bit, because, um. You know, people, when they spend their time, to spend it in a way that's gonna, it's gonna have some, some, some good effect, so. That's it, it didn't really have any effect, it just was, um, I get, well, I guess it had some effect, people got the little losses, too.
Any other questions for me? Yeah. I think that's, uh, complete the summary, good.
Yeah, we've kind of already drifted over a little bit into open discussion and future agenda items, but are there any, um, is there anything for discussion or issues, um?
Were we gonna discuss the graduation?
I didn't plan on discussing graduation at all tonight, yeah.
You didn't plan on that? All right.
I prepared to do that, sorry. It was having a child to participate in graduation, I thought it was, looked pretty well, I got to do work at home, but yeah, I I didn't plan to talk about graduation for a little bit.
It was hot. It was hot, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I could predict the weather every year, but when it comes to graduation, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the hottest day so far. And and so far, I bet you I've been right ninety percent of the time.
Ninety percent at ninety degrees.
Yeah, that's what it's about now.
I know the last one I was to was, it was going to be.
Yeah, it was, it was really warm, uh, it went well, though, I mean, overall, it went real well.
Do you know when we can talk about, about committee assignments, in some point?
Uh, yeah, I think that probably our next meeting, um, I want to kind of, uh, you, with Christian and, and trying to do some, I don't know.
Okay.
On board before, so.
Sure. It sounds good.
I, I can't. Um. Anything, uh, any other issues, concerns, observations, questions?
Just kind of alluded to, just the capital, we have a whole board here, determining our next steps with that.
Well, it's, yeah, yeah, I mean, the year we're gonna go, I suppose, um, in some respects, uh, the budget's already out there, so.
I think, uh, so part of our plan is to kind of update everybody and share with, um, the audience that's still here is, is to create a draft plan with some options. Have a conversation with the finance subcommittee, because a big piece of the the capital, you know, the high school is gonna be financing that project. So, um, we're in the midst of putting a a draft down together, and once the finance subcommittee is identified, we'll whistle down with them, kind of get a, and get some feedback from them. But then also talk about next steps, bringing it to to the full board, having more conversation about it. Um, I wouldn't say it's urgent, it needs to be done tomorrow, but it's also something that can't be put off a whole lot longer, um, because from facilities standpoint, we will just continue to continue to have additional attention, so. Um, that's, that's our goal, is to, is to work through a draft plan, share the finance subcommittee, and talk about next steps, bringing it forward, and, you know.
So if this finance subcommittee isn't interested in you obtaining any sort of referendum, or whatever would need to finance, is it just the whole thing gets shut down, or is it still to get proper to the board for further discussion? Maybe that means having hard time.
But they'll bring it to the board, yeah, they're a committee in the whole, so they're, they bring, they bring it to the board, and the board makes the final decision, so.
So it does not go for a re, to a referendum, or a vote, it does not go to a referendum, and it's not.
Hmm?
Oh, excuse me, that's a typical example.
Well, they could, they could, I mean, that could be the recommendation of the committee, and they'll bring it to the board, and the board would say, um, all right, well.
Okay, so this, committee just recommends.
We'll go to referendum, but then, you know, once we do that, we can't have any role in.
Right, it's a vote, from the people.
Yeah, we can't, we can't campaign for it, we can't, um, you know, either, uh. Say we're for it or against it, we have to just, like, hold, and another committee has to take that one, a committee who's down, you know, doesn't, doesn't have any position with that one, on the board, so.
So the committee's just put a recommendation, and we decide, yeah, your name?
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense, I guess that's not even on the thing that's involved.
Yeah, the committee typically gives a, gives a report, and it's a fairly, fairly detailed report, um, who says, in the past. Um, Eric was, I don't know, in the past, Eric and Chris, and, uh, yeah, they they give us, uh, kind of the ins and the outs, and then of course, we hear from, uh. The treasurer, and, uh, we see what, uh, what, uh, what we want to do, and then we debate it, and, uh. Make a decision that should go to a referendum, or, or just, it's gonna be, you know, whatever, whatever our recommendations are. Makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
It's, it's a, it's an odd process, because you want to be involved in it, like, hook line and sinker, you can't, you cannot be, it's very difficult to, to yourself, to think about. Anything else for future touchdowns? Um, is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, negotiations, and imminent litigation?
Okay, so.
Second.
Second it, no problem.
Evans?
Present.
Reyes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Chilo?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Donda?
Yes.
Motion heard.
All right, we're going to executive session, and then return into open session, excuse me for my phone, please. All right, we're, uh, begging open session, and, uh, is there a motion to approve, um, the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
You've been seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Shyla?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion heard.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.